Good evening, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, August 15th, 2023. This meeting is being video and audio recorded for future cable broadcasts. If you could please silence all your cell phones for the duration of the meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. All right, so we have approval of minutes, payroll, and warrants on our agenda to start. So if I could request a motion, please, of approval of the minutes of June 6th, 2023?
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Right, second. Second. All right. Any discussion on those minutes? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then we have the approval of payroll and warrants. Please, if I could request a motion of approval. So moved.
Second.
All right, great. Any discussion there? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. My understanding is we have no one on delegation this evening signed up to discuss anything on the agenda, so we're going to move past that, as well as old business. Move right into item six, new business. And Dr. Bailey is on vacation. Good for her. So, well deserved vacation. So we have this for Gary here, standing in for Dr. Bailey. So I'll hand it over to you to give the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening. So we reviewed the agenda and, as you said, I'm filling in for Dr. Bailey tonight. And I'm happy to be here. Personnel matters, you have a personnel report in your folder. Since our last meeting, the following staff changes have occurred. We have six new staff members, four resignations, seven terminations, and four transfers.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
The, will you have a teacher, a certified qualified teacher in each classroom at the beginning of the school day?
Yes.
Probably I want to wait for, you know, Dr. Bailey comes back and then we'll know that, you know, a question in the process of seven terminations at the same date, you know, and, you know, and I want to know the process by which they were terminated, how long they were on tenure, or not, you know, with us before, before they, you know, reaching tenure, the, and were any granted tenure. I probably have questions on that, but I thought it was a high figure. And also the date, why choose a June and rather than the traditional April 15th as a, as, you know, as the date of termination or notification.
That is a high number for me. Is April 15th customary, that date that you're mentioning?
April 15th usually.
Right. For announcing a termination typically?
Gives the school district time to get new people. Secondly, law gives the teachers themselves a chance to look for other employment. Waiting to the end of the school, you know, there may be factors involved.
Right. We need to understand factors, sure.
But I think we should be at least open to some kindness as far as how this whole, this matter has been, been handled.
Can I just add, I think Dr. Bailey, and we've talked about this before, has indicated we've got the data around terminations and kind of like exit survey trends that we could share. And I don't know if we've like gotten clear around setting up like a regular cadence of when the committee will get distributed. Like, we should just get clear and I think it would be important to have like a regular cadence of when we distribute, you know, that, whether it's monthly, whatever it is. I just don't know if we've seen it yet, so it would be helpful.
Right. And you haven't seen a report yet, but I know that we are in the process of compiling that information. There's been exit interviews held. Now, all that information is being gathered and collected and put together, and that will be available in a report for you soon. And as far as the termination date, that, those are the effective dates that you're seeing and why it's in the June report or in the report since June, but the notification of the terminations were delivered in early May.
Thank you. Early May. Not, not, it was after April 15th.
Right. It was in early May.
And that's a question I'd like to Dr. Bailey to answer. Why wait beyond April 15th? It's always traditionally been, go back fifty years.
Were these positions eliminated positions or were they terminations contracts?
They were not eliminated positions.
So there's been no eliminations and there's just terminations? That's a lot.
Just not renewed.
Yeah.
Well, as far as the, oh, one was eliminated. One was eliminated, sorry.
Do we know what?
An interventionist position.
Okay. So we'll look forward to getting the report, which will explain more information.
The report is complete. Dr. Bailey just wants to review it.
Of course.
Before she turns it to you guys, it probably will be an ex school meeting.
Okay.
So I've already, I've already completed the report.
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right. So more information will be provided.
Yeah. And the process by which they, it led to their termination, or not renewed, let's put it that way.
Okay. Are there any other questions on personnel matters before you move on to the next agenda item?
So now I'd like to call up Mr. Patrick Missler for the technology update.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
And Chair, School Committee members. Exciting things are happening here. We've been pushing pretty heavy. So some fun things that we've done. Infrastructure update is in works. If you got to see my office recently, you couldn't even see over the boxes, and now you can kind of see me in that room. We've rolled out a lot of the infrastructure. Some of it, we're just ready on parts, but it's really exciting. We have a lot of it in. If you guys want me, I'd go into detail on that. I'd love talking about infrastructure. It might get a little boring for you, but I'll, I'll pull back. District rollover for Aspen, we do this every year, and this year was incredible for us. It was the fastest I've ever seen any district rollover. It was July 25th. And most districts I've been in, it's been in second week of August. And I just want to say kudos to everyone for administration, the teachers, to you name it, and a special kudos to Kathleen Bourne. What we have to have in place is you have to have all of your state reporting done, it has to be validated. All your stuff for the principals need to be in there. They need to make sure they're checking everything. We have to do our next year's calendars, yada, 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 you can name it. All that was done before July 25th, we rolled it up. So I just want to say kudos to everyone on that. It was amazing. Chromebooks, we've cleaned and attached over, about a thousand Chromebooks. They're ready to go out for the kiddos for next year. We also sent out an email this morning about Chromebook insurance. For any families that are listening, we highly recommend getting insurance. We negotiated with Worth that our insurance company again, but it's $33 for the year. That covers every piece of device, full damage, even if it gets run over. And that's pretty much the, for $33, you can't even replace the keyboard at that cost. So really booed you go that way. Super simple. We take care of everything in-house. It's a full white glove service. We take care of it. We send it to Worth that. We get it back, we give it to the kiddo, and we go from there. E-Rate, we're proud to announce that we received approximately $108,000 in federal funding for this year. In the past seven years for Acushnet, and that's as far back as I could go from my records. We average right around $18,000 annually, so we definitely maxed out the issue. And we plan to keep doing that moving forward.
That's fantastic. Can you give an example of like some of the projects that that funding can be used for, just for the public?
Sure. So for E-Rate, for your, for your category one, that's all your switching equipment, anything that touches, touches internet. So switching equipment, access points, servers. So those are some pretty big things in districts. The next category two goes all the way down to desktops, Chromebooks, little peripherals here and there. So, and some phone system stuff. It doesn't touch some of your smaller items, so you're not going to be able to pick up, say, keyboards and mice and monitors, et cetera, but all your heavy items, they really do help us. And we're a 60% district, so what that means is we have a cap. Every district has a certain number for the threshold of what you can get for E-Rate. Because we're 60%, it means what, we put in 40%, they put in 60% to match our whole project. This year, we capitalized on the entire E-Rate allotment, which means we didn't actually have anything left. We took everything they offered us. Some years you don't get that opportunity because you don't have a server that you need, you don't have switching equipment that you need, but this year we really got the push. And then next year, as things happen, so for instance, last year they also had some of the communication things for COVID, code relief funds. They're going to continue to do stuff like that that will capitalize on when they come in. Other than that, we've continued to remove all equipment from our closets. Oh, sorry.
Yep, sorry. So will we counting on this $108,000 with the budget that we put in for next year?
Yes. Yeah, because it came in for this year, so what we did was working with the business manager, we knew what we were going to get. It was still hypothetical. We were pushing for it. And this was it. Now it's finished. And we've received our money.
So we didn't ask for more money than what we needed? We were already counting on this number?
Yeah. Otherwise, we would have to ask for more, and part of the reason why we go for our infrastructure project was because of this severe funding. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to do it, and we'd have to piece it together.
Thank you. Great.
So I note, just for the infrastructure piece, one thing I can say for infrastructure is when it's finalized, this district will not even touch the infrastructure for 1215, 12 to 15 plus years. So that's kind of the benefit for all the projects that we're putting in place. It's a very long timeline. Most things change every four to five years for most parts of the district, whether it's SDC, E, you name it. But for some of the big ticket items that we're touching, the goal is almost 15 years plus. So that way, you don't have to have it on radar. And part of that 10-year plan outlines that, that we have for, for public consumption. One thing we also got to do is we went through all of our closets. We have eight tech closets roughly in this district, and you can imagine what we have in there. We have Legos, we have, you name it. We found a Christmas tree in one. So what we wound up doing is we pulled that stuff out, we cleaned. Kudos to Steve and his crew. They wound up doing some nice waxing on the floors. It's really well done. So we're starting with a really clean surface for our new infrastructure, and it's going to be perfect. So anybody have any questions?
No. Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great.
Thank you, Patrick. So in your folders, you'll have, you have some proposed policy drafts regarding preschool and facilities use to be reviewed as a first reading tonight.
Right. So no votes are taken tonight on these, just a first reading. Do you have to go through each one, or is it just suggested?
Now I'd like to call Mrs. Leah Chesney, the principal of the Acushnet Elementary School, to highlight changes and updates to the staff and student handbooks.
Good evening, members of the school committee. Thank you for having me. The staff handbook, we've made some really minor changes based on, you know, new hires that we've had, some changes in placement of teachers and classrooms. The biggest thing that might be a different change for teachers is that their lesson plans, if they, when they especially are going to be out, need to be on the teacher's desk. So I would say that's the biggest take home of that. And as far as the, or do you want to have any questions about that before we go on to the family student handbook? And for the family student handbook, we updated the obvious, the principal's message, the calendars, but also we have, with the help of business manager Patrick McIntyre, updated our transportation policy as well as school nutrition. So those sections were updated as well. Any questions on those?
On, it's not a, a beginning of the school year unless I question the drop off and pick up, so.
Okay.
Ever yet.
That was not changed, though. That's the same.
Right. It is the same, but I've been, I've been hearing that it's been, was a little traumatic the past, in the spring. So I'm wondering, the last time I was there was right before COVID, and we had a QR system where somebody read your QR code and then your child was put in line. Is that still happening?
Yes.
Okay. So all of that is still happening?
In fact, we added staff to make sure people who might walk from the development over there would have someone in, you know, a place for where the crosswalk would be. We have extra people out there. We're still using the QR codes.
Yeah, so that's.
Yeah. I don't know what the, yeah.
Again, you just hear these things, and I wanted clarification in public.
Yeah. If somebody had a problem, I'd love for them to, to call me. You could solve it.
About the crosswalk, is there any way to get that painted so people see it? It's white.
It's not painted yellow.
It should be, I was there during soccer drop off and summer school, and people were standing there trying to cross, and nobody stopped. So even like those lights that like flash, or like a solar light that says like pedestrian crosswalk, would be even more helpful, but you said there's staff walking? Is it, is it staff walking them across the crosswalk?
Well, I think that she's there to make sure that people stop so they can go by. There's only like a few people when they're walking. When, we're, we're only talking about maybe 10 people who come and pick up their child walking.
Okay.
That's only for people who are walking.
Okay.
Not for people who are dropping their car off. Those, if they have like a kindergartner, and the kindergartner has a sibling, they're parking their car, walking over to the library, doing picking them up there. So it shouldn't really be a lot of people, but definitely, you know, when I'm out there, I don't see it as a problem.
Yeah.
I also, I don't know which crosswalk we're talking about, but.
The first of ours, maybe.
Okay. So, so it's good we have a crosswalk now, because we didn't, right? But it is white. And, and I've walked through there a couple times where literally there are cars parked in the middle of the crosswalk.
And we were going out there and telling them, please don't do that.
Yeah, yeah. And I, and actually I was there and I saw somebody go over and, and do that. But to the point around making it more visible to the extent we can, I think is a, is a.
That's a great idea.
Patrick's over there. Just to get.
Actually, he's, I see him writing down actively. Thank you.
You need a volunteer on putting a sign up. I'll be happy to just, you know.
Mr. McIntyre's been working with the Safe Foods to School, and this is a focus that we're going to be looking at, you know, how do we improve the safety and the ability for more students to be able to safely walk or go to school.
Even maybe putting it in the diagram, like it's not on the diagram in the student handbook, so maybe noting it? I don't know.
Well, definitely make sure it's communicated in all parent communications as a plan.
And if you have a body there, that's helpful.
Yeah, there's a body there. I think it improved when, once you put that person there.
Oh, I hope it did.
Yeah. I think it did.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Chesney.
So we do need a vote on both the staff and student handbook. So if I could first request a motion of approval on the AES staff handbook.
Make motion to approve.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Aye. And if I could request another motion of approval, please, on the AES student handbook. So moved. Second?
Second.
All right. Did you have any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
And Mrs. Sylvia, I'm going to present for Mrs. Sylvia tonight, the changes that were made to the FMS student and staff handbooks. So a lot of just kind of cleaning up the document. She condensed the following attendance, family vacations, and unexcused and excused absences on page six. Mr. McIntyre updated pages seven through nine regarding the bus section, and they just reflect the current language and expectations for bus drivers, bus riders. Mrs. Mello updated the cafeteria section in pages nine to 11. The à la carte menu items will be available to purchase, chips, snacks, additional drinks other than milk. The grading calendar on pages 17 and 18 was updated to reflect the school year calendar. And under school rules, a more defined progressive discipline model was added to pages 21 to 22. And that's it for FMS. Are there any questions?
Questions remain to be addressed. Just one second, please. We're just doing some reviews here.
And I don't know, Jerry can answer this, but the backpacks in the lockers, why is that a thing? Why do we put, why do the kids have to put their backpacks, backpacks in their lockers and walk around with, with all their things? Because they're carrying around like seven books or something. Why? What's the reasoning behind it?
I think the reasoning may be that when they're in the classroom, they're kind of hanging on chairs, in the aisles, in the walkways, and just kind of in a way, in general, that would be my guess. But we can get further clarification from Mrs. Sylvia.
Do any of the parents agree with what you said yourself? Definitely, but I just.
Well, I, I've always questioned it myself because you buy the backpacks and that it's supposed to help them with carrying all their things, right?
And your water bottle, so they're carrying like three, four books, right? And sometimes their lunchbox, and then their water bottle, and it's like.
And they don't have time to go back to their lockers very often.
Or they feel stressful.
Well, I, I believe that's another reason. The, the lockers are.
Right there.
Right, well, right, and there's one above the other. And so if somebody's in the top locker, the student below can't get it, and in the morning, it, it takes quite a bit of time actually for everybody to finally get into their locker. And so if they're going, we don't have like a, because we have to meet the, a certain number of minutes in the school day, we don't have time built in for passing periods, so, you know, they don't have minutes. They need to get from one place to the other quickly.
So wouldn't that make sense in their backpacks? Right. That should make sense, right? Everything is in their backpack.
Right. But the point of, I think the question of backpacks was for safety, that carrying weapons.
Was it that? I, I think it's, I think it's.
I think that was the reason they had a provision of the backpacks and having more ropes, that I don't think was for any other reason.
It's something we can ask Mrs. Sylvia to look at and learn more about. I know, like during COVID, they did have the backpacks in the classroom, but there were half as many students in any class at any given time.
But prior to that, there never was backpacks.
Right.
It was always an issue.
Right.
And I'm curious, though, again, if it's common practice now in schools, or if this is just our, you know, rule here at Acushnet, I would be curious to hear if this is something that, you know, what schools are moving to now, whether it's for a safety reason or it's because of time of learning and the pressures of moving around or.
I, I agree. I think the committee and the administration is spending a lot of time trying to make sure that we are doing everything we can from a safety perspective. So it would be good to understand that's a best practice.
Yeah.
Should get an X-ray machine.
And that's the ultimate.
All right. Thank you. Good questions, and we'll, we'll, now is it, do we feel that that should hold up a vote on the handbooks, or can we receive the vote?
No, because there can be. I mean, if things are that dramatic and need to change, we can always revisit this, right?
Yeah. All right. So then, if I could please request a motion of approval on the AFMS staff handbook first, please. So moved. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A motion, please, for the FMS student handbook.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay. Just one more question. Absences, unexcused versus not excused? When we look at Aspen, does it have a U or like, do we know the difference, or is it an absent, an absent, an absent, an absent?
I'm, I believe so, because I, on my end, I can see an unexcused or excused.
So it's like an E or a U or something for parents to see, do you know? It is, okay. I just want to, I'll verify that.
Okay. All right. So that wraps up our superintendent report, and we'll move into the business managers' report. So, Mr. McIntyre, you're on.
Good evening, Chair Downing, School Committee. You guys are enjoying your summer. We certainly are. Making great progress here at Acushnet Public Schools. I'm going to be up here for a little bit, so we'll go through things as quick as you guys want, but stop me, interrupt me if you have any questions. Fiscal '23 budget, you know, we ended the year in the black. We returned the tuition error of $217,906 to the town as we had, you know, talked about and decided to, prior to winding down the year. The remainder of funds left in our budget were meany old, and those were also returned to the, the town. With school ending and the year-end spend down, through strategic planning and cost savings and grants management, we were able to afford ourselves some exciting, some exciting projects to move forward with that weren't necessarily in the original budget. The installation of the school's, school zone speed signs, which are actually going to be happening next week. We hired a third-party contractor to take care of that, so those should be done in time for the start of the school year. We got ADA compliant grass mats over at Big Toy, so now that our, our playground is accessible to the handicap. We accelerated some of our touch view replacements for the classrooms, along with the 10-year plan and the tech department's help, and we approved safety and security district-wide, which, you know, for the sake of the topic, I'm not going to elaborate on in public, but there's, there's further detail in your notes. For fiscal '24, we're off to a good start. We overhauled the, you know, the entire process of managing the budget. Each department head has their own tracking spreadsheet with their account numbers, their, you know, detailed line item budget. They're managing that well, you know, everyone's bought in and it's, it's been seamless. It's been great. Special shout-out to the town, the town accountant, Todd Hassett, Nick Monicello. You know, I've been talking about aligning our chart of accounts with DESI standards, and, you know, they heard what I had to say. We met a couple times and talked, dove right in and, you know, remapped all of our accounts. And they're active and working already, so that's great, and that's going to help with year-end reporting and just compliance across the board. So thank you to them.
Patrick, we have a little question.
Sure.
So. So now that we have all of these aligned and everything is now in order, will the reports for our next fiscal year be much easier to put together, like when we go in front of the finance committee and we go in front of the select board?
Yeah.
It'll be much easier and explained and all that good stuff?
Yep. So we did what we could to make that transparent with the fiscal '24 budget process.
I know, it was difficult because of.
It was, it was time consuming, it was difficult. Now it's.
Should be.
Yeah, it's quick and, you know, it's a roll forward. It's, it's done. So, yeah, I'm excited about that. It's going to save me a lot of time and effort.
Thank you.
That's great.
Just in regards to Big Toy, the grass mat thing, made me think about this. Do, do you know how often, for example, Big Toy, the base of the playground is mulch? Do we have a, a regular cadence of how often we replenish that? Like, I haven't seen us do it in a while. Like, we did it a few years ago, somebody fell, and we tried, but I haven't seen us do it. It looks a little bit depleted.
So actually, when we had the company out here, they, they deemed it satisfactory. We did ask them while they were out here. I'm not to say that I'm an expert on the playground and mulch or how often it needs I'm not to say that I'm an expert on the playground and mulch or how often it needs to be turned over or whatnot. But I can give you that much, that they were content with it. For the grass mats, they actually even, you know, compacted the ground below the grass mats so that those would stay in place nice and the mulch would, you know, float above it and rain and things like that. But otherwise, you know, we're kind of playing it by eye, I guess. You know, if we see bare spots or big divots or holes, you know, we're going to do what we can to rake it out, shovel it out, get new mulch in.
And I don't, I'm not an expert in this field. Like I think when we looked at this a few years ago, we explored some other alternatives besides mulch that maybe are safer. I don't know if that's something we continue to monitor.
Very, very expensive.
Yeah. Had them out here. You met him once, but I've met him like three times. And it's just not cost-effective. And it depends on what report you read, because some reports say, oh, it's amazing, and then the other ones say, well, mulch gets in there and there's other, so it's a balancing act.
Yeah, so it's very expensive, all jokes aside. It is very expensive. But there are conflicting reports, like Sarah said, you know, some people are concerned about the PFAS and the plastic that they use and the rubber. The toxins that come off of that and the heat, things like that. So, you know, we'd have to do some deep digging to see if that's really the way we wanted to go to cover our entire playground for that cost.
Does Steve check it every, at the end of every school year?
Yeah, more frequently than that. Like I said, I mean, we're constantly back and forth between schools, so we have eyes on it all the time. And if there's a rainstorm or something that's leaving big puddles and big holes, you know, we try to take care of it as we can. And then if we have to order mulch, we'll order mulch.
I mean, to my eye, it looks depleted, but again, if they looked at it and was saying it's good, that's good. I think we should continue to watch it.
Up too close to this?
No, four inches.
Oh, I'm sorry. Too close to the mic. Yeah, so, all right.
So four inches is the standard.
So we can bring out a second opinion too for that, if, you know, if you see it as a concern. That's easy enough. We have some time this summer.
Well, I mean, I think if we know it's the four inch, it's the standard.
Sure.
All right. All right, so carrying on, we're all good there. I provided a balance of our grants and special revenue funds. Again, I'm not going to go into detail on that, but if anyone has any specific questions to it. I did want to highlight, you know, the grants in particular. We have some good grant funding left in our ESER funds. We continue to apply for and are awarded grants for academies, a new year. A new item this year was our curriculum grant that we received for professional development. For our science teachers to get up to pace with the new free curriculum that we're implementing. So that will be a cost savings moving forward. Summer Academy Grant, like I said, our Safer Schools Grant that we were hoping for and counting on came in at just below fifteen thousand dollars. But it's better than zero. And then we received our typical ESA and IDEA grants to wind down our grant funding for the upcoming school year. Just credit to facilities and the school principals for, in the summer program, for working through our, you know, constant facility cleaning and overhaul during the summers. That's their big project. They don't get a summer, you know, they're working their hands and feet to the bone all summer long, getting these schools ready for the students and the teachers and the staff and faculty. So thank you to them. We definitely have more to go, but we still have a couple of weeks to spare and, you know, we'll be in good shape. Food services, so again, I just, I don't want to glaze over it, but at the end of every school year, we're required to report a balance sheet and a profit and loss statement to the state. You know, I'm happy to say, even with the funds that we have in our school lunch funds, we also ended the year in the black, about a hundred fifty thousand dollars in the school nutrition program. That will go back into the program for equipment replacement, meal menu improvements, things like that. And again, more importantly, as we were talking to prior to the meeting opening, free meals permanently in the state of Massachusetts, so that's incredible. That, you know, provides equal opportunity for all our students to eat breakfast and lunch. Shout out to Paula, Paula Bailey, and some of the other superintendents in the area who signed a letter to support this program and pushed heavily. I know Mr. Howcraft also was involved, you know, speaking to state representatives to share his opinion on it, but we did it with, you know, the help of everybody, so that's incredible. And it's only going to be helpful for our students and their concentration in the classrooms. Transportation, we're ready. Transportation is winding up. I've been working with Amaral. We overhauled that process completely this year, the registration process. You know, thank you to the families for your cooperation. We did have a big inflow of registrations at the beginning, but after the deadline, we still had one hundred-plus registrations. And we still expect more. Unfortunately, that's the nature of the beast, but again, cooperation with everyone can only help that and help us get our routes out earlier and make necessary changes as soon fit. So that's where we're at with transportation. And that really winds down my managers' report before we hop into the next. Any questions?
No questions, sir. Thank you.
Adam, Chair, I don't. Do it later on in the agenda. Maybe we should send a letter of thanks to the four state representatives that served this general area, thanking them for supporting the free lunch program. They need a motion?
Well, would you want that letter coming from the school committee or from the?
Yes, I think it would be, I think it would be good, public relations.
Do we need a vote for that?
No.
I don't, you know, so we don't do any votes or?
No.
We don't need a vote for that, but we all agree that that's a wonderful gesture and we can make sure that that letter goes out.
We'll go over the names of the four that served this area if you like, you know, another.
Okay.
Yeah, we have.
Probably.
All right, so moving on, so, you know, with the help of policy subcommittee and, you know, reevaluating certain policies as we stated up at the, you know, first read section. The fees came into play related to these policies. The first being preschool fees. So with the help of Ms. Bettencourt and Student Services reevaluated, you know, the pricing of local, our school districts local to us, what they're charging for comparable preschool programs. And sufficient to say, we're content with keeping that fee flat between last year and this year. So tuition would remain at twenty-two hundred dollars per student, which if you're asking me is a bargain still. And we have full classrooms, so that's great, including a waitlist. But what we did want to change to better align with the Commonwealth of Mass Department of Early Education and Care is the sliding fee schedule for reduced tuition. So it's not something that we have been doing differently. We've always mirrored their fee scale, but we've always created more categories in it. So instead of zero to fifty percent of income threshold, we did zero to ten, ten to twenty, twenty to thirty. So it was, you know, almost fifteen different steps, ten different steps you could fall into. Now we're just adopting EEC's sliding fee schedule. There's four buckets. You're either zero to fifty percent, fifty to eighty-five percent, eighty-five to a hundred percent for full price. So we are proposing to adopt that fee schedule.
We need a vote?
We do need a vote. So any questions?
Any questions? We have a motion to approve the new updated sliding fee schedule for preschool tuition. Some moves?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so moving on, again, related to the use of facilities policies that we were changing or suggesting to change at first read. We would also be pulling out the fees from those policies and having it as a, you know, an addendum, if you will. So again, you know, we took data from the surrounding towns, you know, combined it to the best we can and still ended up in a favorable position compared to our neighbors. But we are looking to increase our fees. We were, you know, operating under daily fee rates as low as five dollars a day for civic communities. Doesn't matter the number of hours, it was five dollars a day. Ten dollars a day for some of our athletic groups, which, you know, just, we're not trying to make a profit, but that doesn't even keep the lights on for us. That doesn't keep the heat on for us. So you have the schedule in front of you. We're switching, we're proposing to switch to an hourly rate. Again, this is based on, you know, a study of data in the surrounding towns and we're still coming in under those towns. But this should cover, you know, maintenance costs, really is what it's doing. We're not aiming to profit off of anybody. That's not the goal of this. This is to maintain our buildings, to keep them attractive for people to use, to keep the heat on, to keep the lights on. You know, whether it's a gym floor, you name it, the cafeteria, the stages, the equipment that we're putting out there to let them use, this is what's going to upkeep that. So, you know, if anybody has any questions on that fee schedule, I'd be happy to answer them, but otherwise, you know, we're voting, we're suggesting this to be voted in as well for school year twenty-three, twenty-four and onward.
This does not include basketball, correct?
So that goes back to the policy. So the fee schedule is your set fees, but at the discretion of the superintendent, we can enter into a contract with any organization. We can change the fees. So what Sarah's alluding to is there are few organizations that heavily use our facilities. You know, AYSA, AFBL, FAYA, cheerleading. And it will be in our best interest, you know, I believe it would be in our best interest to enter into an annual contract with those organizations rather than, you know, charge them an hourly rate that's more geared towards, you know, daily usage and not annual usage. So we would talk about that off-topic and then when we had a contract ready to go to them, you know, we could present it and vote on that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's time to do these updates, so yeah. So if I could have a motion to approve the new, up to the revised facilities fees?
Some moves?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So moving on, so food service. You know, Shelley is our new director and obviously I've stepped in and we're making great waves in that department. You know, we're overhauling processes behind the scenes that you aren't necessarily going to see or view. You know, we consider a sexy change, if you will. You know, we're changing the meal menus. We want to do taste tests. We want to cross-train. We want to be compliant with everything and anything. And what we've talked about is, you know, we don't want to just be par for the course. Like everything else, we really want to excel. We want to be, you know, almost a model department. So with that, again, we did an analysis since her promotion and realized that what that has done has inevitably left us with three less hours in that Ford middle school kitchen per day. So the time that she could be spending at her desk, she's out in the kitchen helping prep. And the time she could be spending, you know, ordering and applying for grants and shopping around for farm-to-table, you know, goods and better discounted items or healthier options, she's in the kitchen, you know, lending a hand. So again, through analysis, we're suggesting to increase labor hours in the kitchen from seventeen point five hours a day to twenty point five hours a day. The cost associated with this, we would see approximately fifteen thousand dollar increase annually, which would not be funded out of local. It would be funded out of the school revolving, the school nutrition revolving account. And, you know, long story short, with our preliminary budget that we're building for that department, we can afford it. And it's only, again, going to point us upwards and have us excel in that department and align with, you know, some of your school committee suggestions on menu changes, better options, healthier options, things like that.
Is some of that geared towards, and I'm pretty sure we had this conversation, but keep me honest, like, we had a situation in the morning, maybe where staff wasn't coming in until right before we served. And so that was maybe limiting some of the options that we could utilize in the morning. And so is some of this geared to help solve for that? And I think that's the Howcroft had recommended. Let's take a look at that, frankly.
Yeah, so some of these hours are going to go towards breakfast serving time. I don't recall exactly, you know, I'll be honest, exactly what that situation was, but.
I think we were talking about how making a breakfast sandwich.
Right.
Like there was no time to make breakfast sandwiches, so they could have been sooner and to make it fresher.
Right.
Yeah, so this, this will all play into that. I'm not saying it's going to be an immediate impact, but again, that's the idea is, you know, we buy more hours, there's more time for prep. Different ordering, different things to try or run really. But again, more importantly too, it's also going to allow Shelley as a director to direct her program and do the behind-the-desk work that, you know, is, you know, very demanding. You know, every day, every month, there's different quotas and reports and things like that that we have to report back to the state. So that buys her hours in her office while we also buy additional hours for kitchen staff.
All right, so. Do we need a vote of approval here to approve the food service hour increases? Motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, then last but not least, school breakfast and lunch meal prices. So again, a part of policy, EFD meal charge policy, school committee's policy. We need to vote on a price for meals every year, regardless of permanent free or not. So with that in mind, all first meals, breakfast and lunch will be free for students. Doesn't, you know, apply to faculty, obviously, but first meals will be free. Second meals will be paid for in full. They're receiving a full meal. It's not reimbursable. It's not a part of the program. They need to be charged for it. In the past, and which is still true, we are exempt from meeting the paid lunch equity tool minimum price because we've had a positive balance in our school lunch revolving account. But there are rumblings that this might not, this waiver, if you will, will not exist moving forward with the permanent, you know, free lunches. So if that goes away, I just want to highlight currently in school year twenty-two, twenty-three, the required price for us to be charging would have been three dollars and thirty-one cents for a meal or a second meal. We were at two dollars and seventy-five cents for AES and three dollars for FMS, so a weighted average of two dollars and eighty-eight cents. So that's about forty-three cents below the requirement, which was okay again. We were compliant with that. But my fear is if this goes away, we're going to have a huge uptick in price one year where we're not just saying, hey, meals are increasing a quarter or fifty cents or ten cents. We're going to say, hey, they're going up two dollars now. They pulled this rug out from under us. Now we have to charge you, you know, five dollars instead of three dollars. So by proposing this new price, which we're suggesting be three dollars and seventy-five cents for second lunches, that incrementally gets us to where we need to be to meet this paid lunch equity tool if it ever does, if the waiver ever does go away. But also to stay flat at that rate for a couple of years. It's going to buy us time to, so we should have a flat meal price, you know, for this year and moving forward. Again, that's on second meals only.
Right, so this is if a child is still hungry or getting their meal.
Do you know how often that happens?
Yeah.
Happens a lot.
I don't see it.
Yeah.
It doesn't actually happen that much here.
Yeah, I'm negative.
There's studies showing that. There are studies that show that children come to school hungry.
The boys are hungry, yeah.
So unfortunately, something we're working on is tweaking our point-of-sale system. Right now, these meals weren't being counted as secondary meals, so we weren't able to pull adequate data on that. But the general understanding from the food service director is that second meals are minimal. It's the same repeat persons and children and students that do it, but it's not a majority of the population, the students. So that's piece one. Oh, well, excuse me. So that's the main takeaway from this. In addition, you know, the other price changes aren't tied to this paid lunch equity tool, but they're tied to our costs that we're putting into these meals. And again, it's not to profit off of anything, but it's to cover our costs so that we can continue to maintain, you know, our school lunch program and standards. You know, eventually, this money that we have in our fund will go away to our equipment replacement and upgrades and, you know, food changes and things like that. But once we hit a plateau, we're going to want to be able to stay consistent. And that's going to come with an increase in, you know, meal charges to cover our costs. So step one would be increasing student school breakfast prices from a dollar fifty to two dollars. Again, this is only for second breakfasts because breakfasts are also free. Increase student school lunch prices from two seventy-five at AES and three dollars at FMS to three seventy-five at both schools. Again, second lunch only. Again, second lunch only. The reason we're staying consistent with both schools is because they're receiving the same exact quantity food, same meal choices, um, you know, all of the above. Um, increasing adult breakfast prices as well from two dollars to two seventy-five. Adult breakfast participation is very low, but again, they receive, um, you know, a little more quantity of food, so we're covering our costs there. And then the same idea with the adult lunch prices. Um, we're going to aim to increase that from three fifty to five dollars. Again, just to cover our costs and our meals taxes, which we have to pay to the state monthly. And honestly, you know, you can't go anywhere to get a, a lunch for five dollars as good as you're getting in our cafeteria. So it's my two cents.
Okay. Any questions? So if I could have a request a motion please to approve school breakfast and lunch meal prices as proposed by Mrs. Gomes.
Someone?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Alright, well, thank you for the time. It was good to see you guys for the first time in a couple of months.
Yeah. See you. Nice work as always. Alright, um, we have one item, um, under school committee member reports that I do want to allow Mrs. Gomes to speak on.
Yep, so, um, I was approached by a member of the Fairhaven Public Schools to see if we wanted to explore potential regionalization study and in a separate conversation, explore high school tuition students to ORR. Without taking a position either way, we would like to make a motion to take a vote of support that the committee is in agreement with the chair and vice chair having a preliminary discussion about these topics. And again, these topics were, is just an exploration of a regionalization study and tuitioning students into ORR high school and bringing back the information to the committee. So I've said the legal spiel that I'm supposed to say. So basically, I was approached, um, by someone in Fairhaven who wants to bring back the regionalization study. And of course, I was timid about the situation, so I said, why don't we just start with a conversation? Let's just have a conversation with the chair and vice chair to see if this is even something that we want to bring back to the committee. And when I mentioned this to Dr. Bailey, we had our attorney talk about it and, and we do need a vote for this, again, preliminary conversation.
I would even call it an exploratory conversation. It's really just to understand if this is, there's an appetite on both sides to even, to even explore. To have it be part of school choice?
For regionalization for, for Haven, so that's one conversation.
Okay.
And then a separate conversation with ORR, ORR high school to add them to part of our tuition, which be, which would be, we have right now New Bedford, Fairhaven, um, Crystal Aggie, and we would add in ORR.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. And I would add, um, you know, I think there were, there was interest at one time in, in having a study done around regionalization to understand opportunities for cost sharing or other cost savings opportunities, but that feasibility study never happened, right? So we're not, I'm not, I don't think either one of us is suggesting that we are going to move into a feasibility study, but we'd like to at least see if, if there is interest in exploring on a deeper level any further cost-sharing opportunities or collaboration so that ultimately we're making costs more efficient for the district.
And, and, not, not only that, but my whole thing, back about nine years ago, I was part of the subcommittee that was talking about the regionalization, just doing the study part. My concern was having more of a say if, let's say for an example, um, if our high school was regionalized with another district, we would have more say in what was happening to our students. Because right now, with tuition-based high school, Acushnet has no say with their kids. Once, once the kids go, it's, it's basically, they're on their own. So that was one of the parts that I thought was important that we should at least look at and find out more information about.
I'm not necessarily opposed, okay, to this meal. But this is a major topic in, in the operations of the schools in, in Acushnet. This is no minor endeavor in any part. Uh, could be, because it, it could have, it's potentially loaded with landmines and, and booby traps, uh, and I'll explain with you, you know. First of all, cost sharing, um, capital cost, past, you know, indebtedness. And we, we have to, uh, you know, negotiate with the, with the, with the, you know, site with Fairhaven. Uh, exclusion of free choice in a sense of parents being able to send their school, uh, their children's site to New Bedford High. Uh, we've had, um, tuition with New Bedford High and, and also Fairhaven as well for a hundred and twenty, uh, over a hundred and twenty years. Um, we are going to just go on another, another direction without any really in-depth study. I would say before we, uh, it, we may want to have a general vote of, of exploring it. Uh, I wouldn't use the term potential, but, uh, because it's, that's, it's already a decision. The, the, we should basically maybe revisit the availability of funding or even look for funding and grants for a extensive feasibility study.
Right. We're not even there yet, but, but yes, but there would be no decisions made without a comprehensive feasibility study done. And, and that was frankly, from my opinion, is, was a shame that that feasibility study wasn't done originally.
Well, see, I think it's basically what happened.
Because we basically voted, the town voted to not having information, is basically what happened.
This lack, I think is, this is, I, I'm glad you raised that point. I think what we have to do is communications. All parts of, of, you know, governmental should be involved in any of the decisions, even with the feasibility study, you know, at least they agree. It's no question, you know, we have a great agreement in our benefit with, with Fairhaven. And it's, you know, and I'm not surprised, especially after, you know, a failure of a two-and-a-half override in Fairhaven, and they're now looking for more money. And now they're basically, you know, saying, hey, you know, Acushnet's, looks pretty good. There are a lot of apples on those trees. Uh, let's, let's get into a, a good agreement where we can get, you know, receive more money for some of the things we built. And I see that, it's no surprise that it came from, from Fairhaven, you know. And I, and I, and if I were in their shoes, I would probably do the same. But the point is, you know, being involved in that study, you know, in that Fairhaven agreement, we were, we saved a great deal of money. You know, we, we save, you know, we, I, I would say that if we looked at the figures that we would be paying three hundred thousand more a year in tuition costs if, if not for that agreement. So therefore, even go anywhere near of trying to tamper with it.
I don't think that's what we're suggesting.
And let, can we just interject here? Okay. So first of all, this conversation of regional, of the potential of regionalization is going to be like a five or six-year plan. Nothing is, nothing would even happen until sometime, okay? And in that time, right now, we're asking for a very, a, a short conversation just to see again if there's an appetite. At that point, and forgive me, I might miss all the steps that were involved in this. But once that happens, there are multiple meetings between two, the two districts. Not only between the school committees, but between other members of the town. And then, if there's still an appetite for that, then we go and find grants for a study, to have the study paid for. So now, we're like four, five, six months, seven months down the road potentially for even looking for grants. And then if the grants are granted to us, then it has to go to each of the towns, town meetings, for them to agree for these things. And as I remember, Fairhaven agreed for the feasibility study and Acushnet denied it. And so it stopped right there. Had we had moved forward, we would have had the studies done. And by the way, the studies, just to recap quickly, was regionalizing just the high school, regionalizing the middle school to the high school, and then regionalizing the entire district together. Those are the three options we were looking at and wanted to be studied, just so we would know.
To have information.
Just to have the information.
We never got that information.
Well, I think a repeat of going over, you know, having a dialogue, uh, in, in all aspects of, you know, uh, in, in, you know, in Acushnet's governmental apparatus, yes. I think, and that's why I think it failed last time. All of a sudden, it appeared on a town meeting as a war, uh, you know, you know, and it, it was a reaction. Well, wait a minute, we got something good going on. Is that dan- endanger? It, it was a lack, it was, I think it was a communication gap. Uh, and, and I, and maybe we, we can move forward. Uh, I always say we can do things better and probably, uh, and more efficient economically as well at the same time. And so I'm not going to, that's why I'm not opposed to, to the direction. But I, I want, wanting, you know, not wanting, but the pitfalls. And second, you know, that we have, uh, we have a choice and you want to broaden the choice with O-Rochester region.
Possibly, again.
I think that, I think that's great. Because we're one of the very few communities in Massachusetts that has, our pa- uh, you know, the families can make, the parents can make a choice, well, how many high schools they can go, which have different types of programs that suit their needs. And, 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 uh, we should be, you know, raising the flag and saying, and, and, uh, and I appreciate that you, you want to even broaden that with O-Rochester region. Uh, yeah, so, uh, so, so I, that's, but I, there are, I think we should be very careful about the pitfalls and, and, uh, that, uh, that, uh, that we could, you know, be, be challenged with.
And again, we would, we would learn that from the study and conversations with other people in both sides of the government. Um, looking forward, we know that Fairhaven is having trouble with their finances and are looking for some cost savings, but again, every year, when we go to budget time, Acushnet's always looking for huge cost savings as well. So I just, I think it would be ignorant of us not to explore every option and just see what's out there. And again, what we're asked, what, what I'm proposing right now is again, just a conversation between vice chair, chair and superintendents to see if there's even an appetite that we're going to spend all this time looking into it, if it's even worth it. That's all.
Yeah, I'll, I'll add, I mean, I think for me, it's about efficiency and trying to discover areas for cost efficiencies. Um, and you, as we all know, uh, looking at our budget every year, uh, we have these very high fixed costs that, um, you know, there's no way we're around, like they are what they are. So if there's an opportunity for us through exploring regionalization to find solutions to these costs, I mean, why would we not want to get that information? Now, no decisions are being made, but I think what we're trying to get the committee to agree to is to agree to getting information and to be more, um, uh, you know, aware and knowledgeable about, about decisions that could be made in the future as we go forward.
I think the main focus, and I, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I think the main focus is student educational opportunity.
That too, yeah.
Uh, that is, should be the main focus on any discussion. How would, say, regionalization, how would, um, or, or new, new agreement, uh, uh, you know, updating the agreement or something like, like that? How would it affect our students' opportunities?
I, I absolutely agree with you.
So, and I think, you know, I'm just, just.
Yeah, no, and that's why I think talking to ORR is definitely a good opportunity just to start the conversation. My concern with Fairhaven and any of our kids that go to any of the schools is that this committee in this district doesn't have a say on what's happening in those potential schools. And I think that's a big problem. So the talk of possibly, like I said, totally suggesting, you know, the high school regionalizing, then we would, we would potentially have a committee member on their committee about high school. And then that way, we could have some skin in the game when it comes to curriculum and, and other budgetary items that we have no control over right now. We just pay tuition and that's it. Same thing with ORR, same thing with New Bedford. So, you know, I think the discussion with ORR, depending on how it goes, you know, we are going to keep that in mind and how to keep our kids from Acushnet, you know, with the education that they deserve in those schools. And we'll hopefully have a say in that moving forward. But again, and the regionalization is the same thing. Again, having a say in what our kids are learning and, and involvement in that. Because right now, we have none. There's no real involvement.
Well, you would be out, if you regionalize, you would be outvoted three to two if it was set, was set up that way.
It would never be set up that way. You wouldn't agree to it. And then the whole thing would be a box.
You know, you certainly, you're not going to be the major stockholder in, in, when, when the community is much larger, Fairhaven is larger, two-thirds larger than we are.
But again, John, if it doesn't benefit us, then we won't do it.
Well.
Right? Because the committee has to vote on it.
Long as we're aware. Long as we're aware.
Exactly. Eyes wide open.
And where, in the feasibility, feasibility study covers all the questions and this is where the input of all the sectors of, in, in, in Acushnet government are addressed.
Right. And we were potentially.
And this is where I think we, was failed.
It wouldn't have been, because what we, I had suggested back then was that a formal committee was going to be set for the feasibility study where everybody in the entire town, parents, teachers, everybody was going to be involved in the study. We were going to create a big group for that. And again, it never even got to that point. But yes, every school, just like a superintendent search, everybody is involved in making the decisions. So with that, I'll.
So do you have a?
If we regionalize, then, I don't know if it's going to be a dumb question, but when they're done with eighth grade and they're regionalized, everyone goes to ORR? Or do they still have the opportunity to go to like a colony or?
So if we, if we hypothetically, if we regionalize with, let's say, Fairhaven, then they would go, that would be their high school unless they did school choice to ORR, Dartmouth or wherever else they want to be.
They'd choose with non-incorporate transportation, Brad, go with it.
I don't know. I don't know that question. The school choice.
That's huge. Transportation is huge.
Does tran- when kids have school choice to ORR, do they get bused?
No.
We, we are not responsible.
Okay, so yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I want to caution us from getting too, too ahead. Yeah. These are all such hypotheticals.
You want to go ahead, go talk to people.
I think it's just, we just want to have, we, you know, per our lawyer, we, we're doing this the right way to just get the permission and blessing of the community to have a conversation. Um, and I think what we're saying is, is that those conversations will be brought back to the committee so that we can continue to have meaningful, impactful conversations about how we proceed.
Yeah, yeah. I just asked to clarify.
Yeah, of course, I get it.
May I suggest also that you talk with New Bedford?
Yeah.
Well, this is just for these two. We'll have to come.
It should be all the school and, and if you're successful in, um, having to, you know, tuition with O-Rochester, include them in the discussion.
One thing at a time, John. But I agree that we should have, open up conversations with everyone.
So that would be a vote, right?
Yes. This is a vote just to have a conversation about those two items.
For that, I just don't know.
Yeah. For, is that's?
Yeah.
Neither do we. Okay. Neither do we.
Which would be exclusive, uh, would be inclusive.
So what is the vote we are taking? We're taking.
It just read this long thing here. So we are, we would like to, we would like, I would.
I have it in my mind, what we're doing.
Make the motion, right? I don't want, make some motion.
Yeah, you can make the motion.
Am I allowed to?
Yeah, I think so.
I would like to make a motion to take a vote just of support that the committee is in agreement with the chair and vice chair having a preliminary discussion about the topics of exploration of a regionalization study and also tuitioning students into ORR high school and bringing back the information to the committee.
Well said. Do we have a second?
I'll second, ma'am.
Okay, great. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Great. Alright, thank you.
Should we need a roll call or?
I'll take, well, why not? Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Harcroft?
Yes.
Mrs. Scadara?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
The motion passes. Alright, great. So, we've got some communications noted there that you can read at your leisure. We have no executive session this evening, so if there are no further questions, comments, concerns to be discussed, I think we've got one question.
I don't know if I can ask this, but it's about the middle school vice principal. Has that been, has that person been chosen or hired?
I am not. I don't have that information.
Good.
Will we get updated?
I was on the interview committee, and I don't know anything. So, that's where I was going to get...
Oh, interesting.
So, they're just finalizing the details, and Dr. Bailey being on vacation, and that candidate on vacation as well.
Okay.
They're both back tomorrow.
Okay.
But, so, yeah.
Okay, so, it sounds like there'll be some more information soon.
Yep, so, they're just going to sit down and negotiate.
We'll see.
Alright. Okay, good. Thank you. You're welcome. Alright, so if I could have a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll make a motion.
Second. Alright. Roll call and adjournment. And Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Harcroft?
Yes.
Mrs. Scadara?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Okay, and our next meeting is here at the John Demali's Library on Tuesday, September 12th at 5:30. Thank you.